We're good.
Call this meeting to order, please stand for the torch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, December 17th. It's just a little after 10 o'clock in the morning. We're going to move right into the consent agenda. Melanie?
Approval of payroll, December 13th, 2019. Approval of minutes, November 5th, 2019. Approval of claims, November 21st, December 5th, and December 11th, 2019. Treasurer's monthly report filed, November 30th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We now have an announcement to make. We'll be accepting board applications for the following boards. Alcohol Beverage Commission, one appointment. Board of Zoning Appeals, two appointments. Convention Recreation Visitors Commission, two appointments. Plan Commission, one appointment. Park Board, one appointment. It's a Democrat, has to be a Democrat. Pita Bola, two appointments. Redevelopment Commission, two appointments. Stormwater Advisory Board, two appointments. West Porter Fire District, one appointment. Wildlife Management, seven appointments. The deadline for appointments will be January 7th, 2020. So we have applications in here at the board in our office. I think they're online too. Are they not, Kirk? Yes, they're also online, so you can print them down and send them in. So that's our announcement today. Moving into new business, first up, we have a resolution establishing the intent to conduct the Commissioner's sale, Commissioner's sales to sell tax sale certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment of property taxes. So I'll throw that over to Attorney McClure.
We have the seven-page resolution with the attached exhibit with the parcels listed out by parcel number, property ID, current tax, cost of sale, and also the minimum bid, which is either $75 to start or $50, and that's based upon how many other certificate sales or tax sales they've been through. This would set us up in that timing to have the certificate sale probably in March. So I would ask for the commissioners to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second for a resolution establishing the intent to conduct the Commissioner's tax sale. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have an announcement to make. Hang on, Scott. This, we're going to go off the agenda here. Late, 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 late last week, Friday, we were sort of, not sort of, I guess we were called by some of our US Senator representatives with regards to talking about some of the issues that are going on up at Beverly Shores. We seem to appear to have a lot of soil erosion, beach erosion going on up there, which is getting to the point where it's starting to impact a road that is a sort of a very important road for the town of Beverly Shores. There's gas lines under that road. There's sewer and water, I believe, under that road. And the road is also a main road that goes along Lake Shore. We went up there yesterday, the three commissioners. We took a lot of our staff with us. We actually, within 15 minutes when we got there, we actually got our, one of our stormwater people up there. We were able to fly with our new drone to take some pretty, pretty good photos overhead, flying it just to see what the extent of the damages. So, you know, there's obviously some concern for the public safety of those folks up there that live in Beverly Shores. And, you know, I think that the lake shore in itself is sort of a tricky area. There's a lot of different entities, federal government, state government, local towns, that all have to sort of work together to make this work. There's jurisdictions that are based on water lines, but the water lines have been moving because we've gotten a lot of rain up there, so it's caused even more gray areas to who's doing what. After we surveyed it, took a look in, with the town folks, and we have decided that in order to make emergency things happen, obviously as a county, we have to, we have to declare some type of emergency or whatever to be able to access, access federal grants, access state money. There's all kinds of mechanisms that you have to trigger to make things go in this process. And so today, the federal government closes this Wednesday, and so what we're trying to do is if there's any way that we can move prior to the end of the year, prior to the federal government closing, that we can make a statement as Porter County as to what's going on up there with the beach erosion. We think that this erosion will probably continue as long as you have the water table that you have up there in the high water parks. Water is, can be very devastating. It can be very, can cause a lot of erosion, and that's what we're starting to see. But it's, it's a significant time for the folks that live up there, and so I think what we wanted to do today was discuss this a little bit briefly today and see if we're, we have an appetite to take any action to sort of set up the next, you know, sort of pave the runway for these towns and cities and federal agencies to be able to start talking to the federal government and what have you. So I'm just going to open it up to the floor. I know Commissioner Biggs and Commissioner Blaney were both here, and we have Lance Bella was there. Lance is head of Emergency Management with the county, so.
Well, the commissioners have been aware of, of the erosion problems, you know, due to different, various reasons. I think that, you know, the issue that's going on right now in Beverly Shores is, the results of it are a little different than what's going on in Ogden Dunes. But we've, we've been watching this very closely for the last couple of years. We're limited in our authority because it's not the unincorporated area, it's the incorporated area of these municipalities. But I think what we decided to do is, is take it upon ourselves and, you know, working with federal and state lawmakers and try to encourage the federal government to do something sooner rather than later. Jeff will touch on that, what that is later on in the session. But it was, it was stunning to see the amount of erosion. We were told by town officials that they had lost nearly 40 feet of beachfront just since Thanksgiving. And they're probably maybe 40 feet from the road right now, the water's front is. So it's, we're literally one serious storm away from having a, you know, an emergency in that particular situation, so.
I think the thing that really made our ears prick up was the fact that there are utilities under the road, especially a gas line. But this process is kind of a lot like what we dealt with, with the river flooding last year. We have to declare an emergency in order to free up federal funds to help these people.
Yeah, the other thing to point out too is to piggyback on what Commissioner Blaney said. If this road does go, there'll probably be anywhere from four to 10 homes that will lose access to their, their house. I mean, there's no other way to get to these houses in that area. So, you know, so if you can imagine living up there, right now, you're obviously very concerned and, as we are. So I think, you know, if we can, you know, make a declaration here today, sort of set up our municipalities and our towns and everything to where they can fall in line with the federal government, start having discussions with the Army Corps, start, start acting on their own to get in line, and we think that this will open up the box for them to be able to do it. Because one of the things that you have to do with federal government is you have to declare emergency. That is, that's sort of what gets this ball rolling. And county government is part of that mechanism that has to make that happen. So with that, I'd like to just sort of.
Well, and one, so in, in doing this, we're not, we're not limiting this to the Beverly Shores. We're limiting this basically to the northern shoreline of Porter County. So this allows, with whatever occurs in the next 30 to 60 days, the other cities and towns that are sitting on the lake have the ability to, as we all have to get in line with our emergency declarations, you know, the county is one part of that. Beverly Shores would have to do their own, the state has to do one, the feds then need to then recognize them. But we all have to do this work in order to even put ourselves in that position. But to be clear, if this is passed, it's for the entire shoreline. It's the entire shoreline of Porter County is what, is what, how this is written. So it would allow the other municipalities when things, you know, this became a significant issue very quickly from Thanksgiving basically till yesterday. And so this road is in significant danger at this point in time, and everyone's touched on what, you know, what makes that really significant. But this, if we do this now, we're planning on putting this in place for at least 30 days, which will allow us to get to our next January meetings, but it gives the leeway for the rest of the municipalities to do their own emergency declarations as things develop and change quickly during the winter months up there at the lake, so.
And the commissioners realize that, you know, as serious as what's, what's going on there in Beverly Shores, it is no less serious, or no more serious than what's, than going on in Ogden Dunes. We, we realize that, and that's why we want the entire lakefront under this emergency advisement. And we also found out this morning that the House has approved funds for this purpose, somewhere in the neighborhood of $50 million. So, you know, there is movement on the federal end. We want to make sure that we have our ducks in order here to be able to go in and grab some of that money.
Lance, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, Lance.
Yeah, I, no, I just, I would reiterate what the commissioners have said. And the Army Corps of Engineers did brief, they were going around briefing everybody across three states relative to their concern with the lake prior to the winter months setting in and said to be prepared. And I think, as you've said, the game changer is two things. One, people's, people would be cut off to their house, and, you know, you can say, well, they can hunker down, but that also limits emergency services being able to get to them. So that changes that game as well as now this matter is impinging on critical infrastructures. And so that now can potentially start affecting thousands of people. And so something has to be done in order to try to mitigate that.
And just so everybody understands, this would also include the Portage, the lakefront park property that's experiencing erosion. That, it would also include that, so.
Yep.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, this would, to put a fine point on it, Portage, Burns Harbor, Porter, Chesterton.
Every way.
Really the whole North Shore.
Beverly Shore and all of the other line, everyone that has shoreline.
Yep.
I think Chesterton would love shoreline, but we don't have it.
Yeah, no, I think, like I said, we were up there yesterday. We saw, we wanted, before we took action, we wanted to actually physically look at the situation. And I know at, the town has done a great job up until this point. Jeff Benson has sort of rallied all the players, and they're, they're doing a lot. They have a lot of plans that they're putting into place. We, as a county, have gone up, we've offered resources. Like I said, we flew, they were, the National Park people were going to try to get a drone guy there by the end of the week. We had one there in 15 minutes. We have signs, we're looking, we're trying to help them out as a support net, as a county should. So we've been having conversations with them, and so we're trying to help any resources that we have that we can get up there and help them secure and help them out. We're, we're here standing ready and able to help out. So I think that's important too.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we got the drone footage yesterday in late, in the, in the afternoon and evening. I wish we could show the picture, but it's pretty startling, the.
Yeah, it puts some exclamation points.
The scallop that's dug out and with probably 40 feet from the road at this point. It's a significant, I'm going to guess, but it's what, 80, 100 feet from the road?
At the most.
Basically straight down?
And what's alarming is, as we were advised, is that they've lost 40 feet just since Thanksgiving. They've been measuring it every single day. And, yeah, so it has to be done now.
I think the drone footage lets, as you said, lets you see where those waves impact, and then looking at it from that angle, you can see that it could be, as Commissioner Biggs said, one storm away from impinging that road and then that road collapsing into the lake.
Yeah, at the very least exposing those utility lines that Laura brought up, the gas and the water lines.
I think responding quickly is, you know, as of today, we have our senators in Washington are looking at this drone footage. So within 24 hours, we were able to get information that was so desperately needed to, to make our point and make our case, we were able to get it in front of people rather quickly. And that's, that's what emergency management does. It's a race of time, and we sort of take all the things leading up to it the same way. So it's, it's all hands on deck, and I think for today, I think what we want to do is before the year ends and we move into the holidays. It's a shame that this is happening over the holidays, but Mother Nature doesn't really care, go by a calendar, I don't think. And that's what we've learned up here the last two years with flooding events and other things that we've had to respond to. So, you know, I think it's incumbent on our board to take whatever action necessary. And so with that, I'll throw that to the floor and.
What's the best way to do this?
Just pass as submitted, as drafted. Lance Bella went through this. I, then him and I talked this morning. We made the one small change, and we just need a vote to declare an emergency pursuant to the declaration as proposed.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in second on a emergency declaration for Porter County, for the north lake shore of Porter County within the borders. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
And that's also travel restrictions included.
It's the, the travel restriction within there, since it's a town road, is a suggestion.
Yeah.
And that's also based upon the observations, that's, that's our suggestion for that particular road, that the traffic be slowed down and the weight be limited as much as feasible.
We don't need a lot of bouncing on that road right now, so we need to take precautions there too, so.
I'd just like to thank you and all the departments within the county that moved so fast on this, because if we delayed, it could have been really, really bad.
Yep.
And so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lance. Okay. Okay, Scott, your turn now. Sorry about that. This is Memorial Opera House, Scott McDonald, Director. What you got for us, Scott?
Good morning. So two things here. We, three years ago, we worked with Cressy Consulting to do strategic planning when I took over as Executive Director at the Opera House, just to have a clear idea of what our goals were going to be for the next three years. And we've reached that point, we've beat those goals. So now it's time to do another strategic planning session for the next three to five years, so we have an idea of where we're going ahead in the future. So that's the first thing. And then second, if you want me to discuss both of these at the same time?
That's right.
Okay. About a month ago, I was at a conference in Madison, Wisconsin with several other theater directors. About 100 of us were there, and the discussion came up about diversity, harassment, all of that. And a lot of community theaters use what's called the Chicago Theater Standards. And this is developed out of notinourhouse.org. For about 20 years, there was a whisper network in Chicago saying, don't work at this particular theater because there are situations of abuse, harassment, all of that. And finally, when it broke, it was a really, really big deal. And we have 14 community theaters here in Northwest Indiana that we all have pretty good relationships, but we kind of want to take the lead on being one of these theaters that says, we're not going to stand for harassment, we're not going to stand for abuse of our volunteers, our independent contractors. We want to pledge to be a safe and welcoming environment. And we don't really have anything on our side that really protects our volunteers and independent contractors. So this is something that I'd like to put into play going forward from 2020.
I think it's a good fit because our, obviously our employee handbook is dealing with employees.
Right.
It's not dealing with the actual volunteers and the independent contractors that you particularly see.
Sure.
A great deal of at the Opera House. So I think this puts those policies in place to protect those, and this is a long tried and true policy that's been gone through and changed and modified quite a bit.
Yes.
So this is kind of the standard in the, in the theater industry. So I think it's a good, a good addition.
Great. Scott, on the consulting for the training workshop.
Yeah.
How, how long is that? It's seven hours? And what are you planning on doing?
Uh, we'll be doing it, I believe, February 28th is the date that we're looking at setting, and it's a seven-hour training. It does include a DISC assessment that we'll be receiving, which is one of those, you know, are you a more dominant type personality, you know? So we can develop our communication as a team and going forth with our volunteers and all of that.
Probably need to take them one at a time, huh? So we have the agreement with Cressy Consulting. I'll throw that to the floor.
Motion to approve. It seems like it worked pretty well last time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it did.
Thanks.
Uh, we have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then on the volunteer independent contractor harassment policy, I'll throw that to the floor.
Um, I applaud you for taking the lead on this.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for an independent contractor harassment policy for the Memorial Opera House. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday.
Thanks, you too.
Miracle on 34th was a hit.
Yes, completely sold out for the run, and Mary Poppins started rehearsals last night, and we're already 65% sold out for that one.
Wow.
So, yeah, we're very, very excited about what we're doing.
Keep the momentum.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have the assessor, John Snyder. We have an award, a contract here for annual adjustments to be conducted in 2020 and 2021. Good morning, John. Is there anything you want to add to that?
There's actually two contracts. One is for what you just stated, but there's also one for our five-year land study, which.
So in the one book?
No, there, there are two, yeah.
What, what's involved with the five-year land study?
So the state requires the assessor to evaluate land pricing on a five-year basis. So we set a base one year, and then five years later, we reset it again, but we use, utilize the data from the prior five years in sales of land mainly. Then the, that will be presented to the Pita Bola, and they will approve or disapprove the study. So they are, they are the ultimate authority on that. So this will be the second time that, while I've been here, that this, this process is taking place.
Who did the last one for us?
I believe it was Nexus.
Nexus.
Yeah. These were both presented out for bid, and this is, this is what we got back, so made an easy decision. We got one.
So one's for annual adjustments, and what's the other one for?
The five-year adjustment. Correct, John?
Yes, sir. It's correct.
Were you surprised to only get one bid?
Somewhat, yes. The, this, this company was before us about a year ago for the ratio study, which is number one here, and they gave us a great price and provided a great service to help our office. So, so what's happening here is our office is providing them a lot of the data, and then they're just putting a fine point on it, I think somebody said that earlier up here, but so that it can be presented to the state for approval. So that's basically what they do. They guide it through the state approval process, which was a, which was a problem here many, several years ago, trying to get this thing approved.
And although you've only received one bidder, does the price seem in line with what you've seen in the past?
It's actually less. It's a very good price, yes. Very happy with that.
Do we have one contract here or two?
Two. There's two.
There's two, and they were both properly advertised and things like that. I don't know about as far as the meeting today, but they were. I don't know how that works. Attorneys.
Yeah, I was looking at my.
We opened them. We opened them here at the last meeting, I believe, so. You got to do it separate? We got to do it separate.
Okay.
One is, no, it's right on the front of the book.
Motion to approve the contract for annual adjustments for 2020 and 2021.
For, a second. We have a motion in second for award a contract to the assessor's office for, to appraisal research for the annual adjustments to be conducted in 2020 and 2021. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. And then we have the next.
And then a motion for five-year adjustments.
That's for the neighborhood delineation and land base rates?
Correct, yes. Second. We have a motion in second for appraisal research to do the five-year adjustments for the assessor's office for 2020 and 21. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Up next, John, Don, Don Welson. Don, John. Getting there. Hey, Don, how you doing? So what do we got going on in the wonderful world of IT?
Well, some good things and some bad things right now, but we're working on the bad things.
Yeah.
I'm here, I got three items here. Need approval to purchase 10 switches for 157 Franklin Project that we started.
Okay. And this coming out of your, this coming out of your account? Ours?
This one's coming out of there.
This one is, and then the other, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for a quote for CW, DWG for new computer switches at the 157 Franklin Street building in the amount of $21,250. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then what's next?
Next one is Adams Remco. This is basically just a fix on the paperwork. The leasing company wanted us to make an amendment to Appendix A, had the wrong dollar amount in there. If you look at the invoice copy that I gave, we've been actually paying the 973 every month already. It's just a paperwork thing they want, they want us to do, so I have to have that Appendix A resigned.
Yeah, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second on amended, amendment to Appendix A with US Bank for the print shop copier lease. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Um, and then the last quote for DWG, this is the admin building, which is here. What do you got going there?
Yeah, we're going, we're adding a bunch more storage and some video cards to our VMware host. What we're seeing with these Windows 10 upgrades, it's taking a lot more disk space, and the videos are starting to slow down. Anything that deals with video is starting to slow down a little bit. So we're trying to get ahead of the game here before it gets out of hand.
Our migration is about done, right?
We're, probably have about 80 more to go.
80?
Yeah.
In the first years, the deadline?
Actually, January the 14th, but we have two departments that some of their stuff won't work real well after January 1st, if they're still on 7.
Yeah, okay. So for all those, we're, there's a mass migration from Windows 7 to Windows 10, and after the end of the year, Windows 7 will discontinue being supported from a software standpoint. Also opens you up to a lot of cybersecurity issues and other things too. So once again, trying to take the proactive approach here. So that's, that's what this is for, it's just more storage.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for a quote from DWG to provide the admin building with storage and video cards in the amount of $70,000. in the amount of $79,465. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Don. Have a good holiday. Highway Department, Rich Sexton. We're going to award bids for 2020 supplies. If you were at the last meeting, we opened all of them. And now they're going to come before us to take action on. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, how you doing?
Good.
We only got one that we're just, we're going to accept all bids except for diesel fuel. We're going to go with Triple J Mar on the diesel fuel. But everything else will accept all the bids for everything.
Okay. You said Triple J Mar is who you want to use?
That's who we want to use for diesel fuel.
Okay, okay.
So I think we can do all of them as one except the diesel fuel because we're accepting all of them, all the other bids. And then on the diesel fuel, we just do a motion separately for the recommendation of the department.
How would that sound exactly?
So All the awards.
Yeah, it would be a motion to approve all of the highway department bids that were opened at our last meeting for supplies needed for 2020 excluding the diesel fuel at this point.
As recommended by the superintendent.
So moved.
We have a motion second to award bids as outlined in the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we want to award
We got to do the diesel.
We got to do the diesel.
Right. And who was the?
Triple J Mar.
Motion to approve Triple J Mar's diesel fuel bid for 2020.
Second. We have a motion second to accept Triple J Mar as a diesel supplier for 2020 for Porter County Highway Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign. Motion carries. No snow, no snow. Thanks, guys.
Ninety-some days till spring.
All the piles are huffed up. That would explain your shirt, Jim, wouldn't it? Next up, we have Development Stormwater Management. This is Bob Thompson, Director. First one, we're going to receive and we're going to, we've received and now we're going to open up bids for Bridge 1001. That's West Street over Salt Creek and Valpo. That's right down, we could walk to it. It's that close. It's right down here on West Street.
We received five bids.
Is this a restoration?
Yeah, what it is is a improvements to the bridge deck. Remove the existing asphalt overlay. Install a new waterproof membrane and do some approach slab work if you've driven over that bridge.
Yeah, it's got a little
Yeah, you got a bump right as you get to the bridge deck. And then we're installing sheet piling on what'd be the northwest corner of the bridge.
Where that house is.
Yeah, to shore up that shoreline erosion and scour that's happening there.
Okay. First quote, we have John Brothers Tiling and Escavating Inc., $135,000. Next quote is LaPorte Construction Inc., $225,451. Gallyup Construction, $227,500. Reef Riley Construction, $182,718. And the last quote we have is Ellis Construction Company out of Gary. It's the one, there's two of them.
Two of them.
There's two Ellis Brothers. So this is the one from Gary, is that?
Correct.
Okay. Just going to differentiate between the two.
Two hundred and six thousand eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Yeah.
We were thinking around $225 for
Was your budget? And when would this be, when would this be spring?
We'll come back in January to, we would give a recommendation, but the actual construction, a little before spring because of Coho and salmon runs in the stream.
So we're restricted to work in that tributary. When is it from?
May to July?
Yeah, April, middle of April to, or end of April to July, like middle of June. And we've got another month period there.
So we can't work in that stream those months
Correct.
because of, it's a tributary for salmon and other things. So it's a protected waterway. So we'll have to work around that.
And I would just make a note, one of these bids that were opened for this project from John's Brothers was for Luddington ditch on 10.
So that was one that should have been?
Our stormwater meeting this morning. So the other four are actually for the
Yeah, so why don't you read them again?
Yes.
Without the Luddington.
Without the John's Brothers.
Yes.
So Ellis Construction Company Inc. from Gary was $206,018.78. Reef Riley Construction Company Inc. out of Gary was $182,718.18. Gallyup Construction Company Inc. out of Gary was $227,500.0. And LaPorte Construction Company Inc. out of LaPorte was $225,451.0.
Thank you.
We'll be back in one of your January meetings with our recommendation.
Check all the bids out, make sure they're responsible.
Correct.
Okay. So that'll be on the agenda for first January meeting to award. Okay, next up, what do you got?
Recommendation for Calumet Trail on that. So you know, we had seven requests for proposals that were sent in for the Calumet Trail Reconstruction Project from, we had Antero Group, Primera, Blackmueller Group, Detroit Group, DLZ, SEH, and American Structure Point. Of those, I would say there were three of them that came out and stood out above everybody else. And our selection though was with American Structure Point.
And that went through the scoring system and?
It went through the scoring system.
Okay.
To give you an idea of the scores for this was Eric N. with the National Park Service, Mike Navatney, and myself.
Did we need to, do we, we need to approve it? And then we got to explain it.
Yeah. Okay. So that we have our recommendation of the consultant for the Calumet Trail project. And what's, Scott, can you just give us a little bit of an idea of what the process is going to be just for everybody here?
So this is step one of several steps. This is not a clear indication that this project is happening.
Correct.
This is the first step of attempting to make this happen. And to get us in line, to get our county in line for money, whether it's from the state or the feds, we have to have this design professional scored and recommended and approved by the commissioners as one of the checkboxes in the process to be able to put ourselves in line for future grant opportunities.
Correct.
So this is just that step to put us in that position to be able to have the design professional under contract if in fact the money and the grants and things become available and this project continues to move in that direction. But for us to continue to move in the right direction, the commissioners need to move on the recommendation for the consultants for the actual design of the project.
And just to familiarize everybody with this, this is basically from the Chesterton Nick D Station at 49. And this would run east along Highway 12 for about eight miles. Right now, the Calumet Trail currently winds through at easement that NIPSC owns and controls. And after looking at all the probability and all the difficulties working within that easement with a utility easement, with a lot of real important utilities there, we just didn't think that the two mixed very well. So what this does is our plan or our intent is to bring the trail out along 12 and make it a scenic tour and a scenic trail for the trees as you go from Chesterton into Michigan City. So it's a much, very scenic route. And it would be a Class 1 trail. So it would be off the road. It's not like right next to the road. It's off the road. And it's, some of it would elevate, go through wetland grounds and other things. But it's all being done on a real environmental way. And we think it's a, we think it's a much better system and a much better trail that we would end up with. I know the National Park people agree. We've had a lot of consensus with other stakeholders up there about what we're trying to do here. So what this does is this just starts the laborious process of us being able to select a consultant that we can work with that can take us through this plan. And obviously, we will not act on anything. And one of the things out of this is we hope to have some pretty good budget numbers. That's what we're trying to get to. How much will this cost? How much, you know, do we have the funds to do this? Then it becomes a whole nother discussion with our council and all those other things. So this just sort of sets us up to be able to get some of the data we need to be able to talk about it to the public and to other stakeholders in our county council to arrive to a decision as to whether we want to move forward on this. So it's just, it's just the way that these projects go. And we are only approving, we're just letting a little rope out at a time is what we're trying to say. So we'll be measured, but we want to have all the data before we just move on something. So stay continued, stay tuned. And you'll probably be reading a little bit more about this over the next few years, so.
And I think this puts us basically in the position of being able to have the design professional chosen so that we can attempt to get the first grant would be to start the engineering process.
Correct.
And the money for that, for the design professional to design the trail.
Correct.
And so the first step would be is when we get to that point, then we will know that we think the cost is X and the grant is Y. And then that's when those discussions with the fiscal body can start as far as how much and from where and what that looks like. But this is just step one to put us in a position to be able to get to the grant.
Yep.
Motion to approve American Structure Point as consultant for the Calumet Trail project.
Second. We have a motion second for selecting American Structure Point as our consultant for the Calumet Trail project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, same sign. Motion carries. Look forward to getting that project going. I think that's a great project for all the citizens of Porter County to be able to move back and forth east and west on a nine-mile trail on bikes. It's going to be, that along with the train up there and everything else, we think it's going to cause a lot of excitement and activity up there, which is all good for everybody. So, and for the residents of Porter County as well, too. So next up, we got Woods Edge. This is a PUD ordinance regarding a development located in the southwest corner of Hayes Leonard Road and Joliet Road. This is first reading. So turn it over to you guys.
Petitioner for this particular project is MJF Development Incorporated, Woods Edge PUD. They're requesting a zoning map amendment from R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to PUD Plan Unit Development District. This is forwarding up Plan Commission Resolution 19-06. The Plan Commission heard this at the recent public hearing. And they forwarded to the county commissioners with a favorable recommendation and a six to one vote.
Okay. And then before we open the public hearing, to add a little bit more, this was two meetings at the Plan Commission before it came out with a recommendation. Myself and Commissioner Blaney were in attendance for those meetings. The original application process was modified at the second meeting after we did the traffic study on, I believe, Hayes Leonard Road.
Correct.
And also the original proposed secondary outlet onto Skyline, correct?
Yes, the original proposals showed an outlets, two outlets. One onto Joliet, the other one was going into Skyline Drive. After the public hearing, the Plan Commission, and then this was back in October, the Plan Commission voted to continue this case. Mr. Navatney, myself, Mr. Sexton sat down with the developers and they showed an alternative with removing the Skyline.
Permanently.
Permanently, having that as open space and then having a second entrance out on the Hayes Leonard Road.
And that was in response to the public comment that was received from the residents that lived in Skyline.
Correct.
And that was also based upon the traffic study that we had conducted leading up to that second meeting, which gave the empirical evidence of what the traffic would look like if in fact that original design was approved. And so the second time it came to the Plan Commission, it had a, like as you pointed out, it had the different secondary access point. And so then that was the plan that was eventually sent out of plan with a favorable recommendation to the commissioners, correct?
Correct.
And then the general, and there, obviously we're going to have a public meeting, but generally the public comment was concerning the stormwater issues that surround the area of the concern of the introduction of condominiums within the development itself at some point down the road. And then obviously the traffic concerns and then some density. But before we get to the public comment, Bob, could you go into a little bit of detail, and Mike, on what process lies ahead for the stormwater? And then also, Bob, what would occur on this ordinance? For instance, on the open space Skyline, how that could be changed or can't be changed? And also on the type of homes or, you know, the difference between condominiums and homes? Again, this is more about the process of once this PUD ordinance is approved, what it takes to change that with the notification? And then Mike, because of the stormwater concerns, a little bit of a detail and what, assuming this goes today, what that looks like moving forward?
Okay. First, if the PUD ordinance is approved, the next step will be according to our ordinances is that they have to do a detailed plan. This detailed plan gets heavily into the engineering now, where the application will come in and it will not be scheduled to a Plan Commission hearing for a public hearing on the detailed plan until they meet all of the stormwater requirements and all of the other planning requirements. We're going to check the ordinance. I'll let Mike explain the stormwater requirements.
Yeah, so as part of the detailed plan, which as Bob mentioned, that's heavy on the engineering, significant component of that review of the detailed plan will be for conformance with the county's construction and post-construction stormwater requirements. So they'll have to meet release rate, our release rate requirement, which is, in my opinion, quite a good release rate in terms of it mimics sort of what pre-development and that goes to pre-agricultural development. What kind of yield would have come off the landscape from similar land type? We'll look at storm sewer design, we'll look at design details with detention basins, distributed practices that are going to be part of this development. In the end, it will not be forwarded to, you know, up the chain for consideration and approval by the Plan Commission until they've satisfied all of the requirements of our construction and post-construction stormwater ordinances, as well as the other engineering related codes and ordinances that we have. And we're very much aware at the staff level here about existing drainage issues and associated with West Hills Ditch and the Northwest Hills subdivision. Our goal here is to make sure we're not superimposing or exacerbating those existing problems in Northwest Hills or West Hills Ditch.
And as far as changing the PUD
Correct.
Open space, will all of a sudden want to be changed or?
The PUD is actually creating an ordinance that has their own development standards. And right now, the way this is, is it's single-family residential. With the ordinance, there would be the recording of the concept plan, which shows all of the lots that they have on it for single-family residential. If there is any change in that lot configuration or the style of housing that they have the style of housing that they have discussed with us such, that was a concern about condominiums, they're going to have to come back and amend their ordinance, which means back to the Plan Commission for an application.
After notification to the surrounding property.
After notification to the surrounding property owners, we're back to a public hearing again to go through the amendment process. It's just like a regular rezoning now. In that sense, so the Plan Commission will hear the public comment, it'll get forwarded to the county commissioners for the actual final decision.
And then again, we'd be here.
Again, for another public hearing, correct.
Whether it be, it's quite an extensive process as it's taken to get to here, it would be repeated to get back to make any substantial changes to the actual.
Correct.
Ordinance that's written within the PUD.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay.
So with that, what we're going to do here now is we're going to pause the commissioners' meeting and open up a public hearing. What we're going to do is we're going to give anybody three opportunities to come forward, to speak in favor, and three opportunities for people to come forward to speak against. If you do come forward and you do speak against or whatever, either one, we ask that you come over here to this microphone, give your name, your address, and so we know on the record who's talking. And that'll help us sort of complete our minutes of the meeting as well, too. So with that, what I'd like to do is first, first call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance. First call, anybody wishing to come forward, speak against this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance?
Right here.
Sir, come forward, come to the microphone, give your name and your address.
Good morning. My name is David Williams, 152 Hayes Leonard Road. My property busts up all the way across the back. I've got 353 feet across the back. And then on the side where the proposed road's going to come in, where the house used to be, I've got 208 of them there. My question is, what are they going to do about transition from the property to my property? I mean, how will that transition? Before Mr. Coolman said that they were going to keep that tree line across the back, that tree line is my tree line. It's not theirs. So, I mean, I don't know what he's talking about. But I want to know, are they going to put a fence up? How is that going to transition there? Because I've got substantial property on both sides. My property is L-shaped and my property goes behind two other houses to where the road is going to be, where they tore down the house. When I came in and talked to the town initially, when they tore down the house and said that they were going to put a road there, they told me that they can't just tear down the house and put a road in. Well, that's exactly what they're throwing up. So, I mean, how does things change so much, so drastically?
Well, that's, it's the process. The process, you can't, they could not just come in and tear a house down and put a road in. But if they go through the process, a couple meetings of Plan Commission, it being recommended up here, it's part of the subdivision, that is part of a plan. That's why you have notice. And that's what, that's why this is the process to allow that to occur. And that's why you're here and being able to give your comment on it.
Yes. I mean, what they did is they initially tore down the house, bulldozed the whole footing and everything into the basement and covered it over. So, I mean, how do they build a, a road there with that? There was a swimming pool behind that in front of swimming pool. They did the same there. They just caved it all in and covered it up. And there's a pole barn that they just, somebody took away. So the whole foundation is there. What are they going to do? Dig a hole and put that in? I just don't understand how they get away with this. That, that's my, my thoughts.
So your concern is from the transition from your property to the roadway?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, will there be a fence there? I mean, how will that be maintained? I, I take great care of my property. And it's always been so nice because it's been just a cornfield or soybean field behind me. And now I'm losing all of that. They told me before it was landlocked, it would never be developed. So.
Well, I think as we start working through the engineering portion, if this were to move forward, those are comments and things that will be taken as we move through that process. And that's why we appreciate you coming up, giving your name and address and letting us know your concerns.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and also another thing while I'm here is that both you, you've got two Coolman subdivisions now. The one that is building on the east side of Hayes Leonard, Flatlock, I believe. And now this one. So you've got two new subdivisions coming right out on Hayes Leonard, very close to US 30. It seems like that's going to be a bad situation at the peak hours of the day.
Well, the school is now gone. So I would think that you were going to get some relief there, probably quite a bit. It's.
Right, be more targeted.
More targeted where the school was.
Third.
Right, right. So from, just in that area. I'm just talking just that area. I'm not talking the whole road. But I think we also did a, there was a study done as well, too, right? A traffic study?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I guess they'll have transitions going in.
Gets back to the transition piece again that you're, you're talking about. So.
I think what we want to do is make sure that that is all kept nice. And if anything got better than going out.
I, I would agree with you. I would. Thank you for coming forward. This is the third and final call. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance? Yep, we have another one. Good morning.
My name's Lori Everhart. I live at 239 Skyline Drive. I'm not sure I'm actually speaking against this, but I'd like to speak.
That's fine.
And two concerns. One is that I applaud the fact that you're not now finding a road onto Skyline or into Skyline because I think Skyline drives usually our best, best traffic. However, I'm really happy to see the development of bike lanes along 30 and out into the Hayes Leonard area. And I just would ask if it would be possible to develop a connecting bike lane through this neighborhood and help out with Skyline. I don't know if that's been considered, but I'd just like to raise that. Maybe I'm speaking forward. And secondly, I just wanted to ask for clarification, what the conservation drainage means on the flat map. Is that actually a ditch behind all of the properties all along there? And if that's so, then I assume that all of the trees on the edge of the property will have to go if there's a ditch created to make that kind of business.
I would defer to our county engineer on that. Mike?
Yeah. We've had preliminary discussions with the developer on the, the overall concept for the stormwater management plan, haven't gotten into the details. But rather than a ditch, it's more like, more like a bioswale, an infiltrated bioswale. So planted with native vegetation, encouraging hydrologic processes of infiltration, the backflow transpiration. Yeah, always cognizant of grading and how these ditches along, or swales along property lines connect with existing grades to ensure that you don't get into drip lines and tree flaws.
The trees.
So that'll be something we'll be looking at.
That's right.
Get a detailed process. But think of it, rather than, you know, as you're driving south country, rather than why is a straight, you know, ditch, more like a shallow drainage way, plant some native vegetation, is my understanding.
And then you would actually spray some of that soil off and create a drainage, like gravel beds or something?
Right. And then some of these may add gravel beds or perforated drain tiles below, which will help them encourage drainage from low spots and connect with the overall drainage system as a whole.
Third and final call. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance? Now we're going to move to first call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? Same process, come up, give your name, address. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And with that, the public hearing portion is closed. We now reopen the commissioners' meeting and I'll throw it to the floor for the commissioners. Tony McClure?
Let's have Mr. Tom. I'm not sure we ever addressed the first gentleman's concern. Let's talk about the transition. I know we're probably going from R1 to R1.
It is. I, part of the transition, I think he was, I got the impression he was concerned with was the maintenance of the area that's going along that line.
Correct.
Here again, the details will come out in the next step on that, where we would have to review the covenants on that. Most importantly is the maintenance of the open space in this area and how they are going to maintain these areas that are going to be landscaped within the right of way with the bump outs and everything on that. So we are going to have to pay close attention to the covenants when they come in. Generally with our ordinance, it states that the open space has to be maintained by a group. Either they have a POA doing it, or they have a not-for-profit do it, or they give it to the park or whatnot. And if it's not being maintained, then the county commissioners have the ability then to come in, maintain it, and then put liens if it becomes necessary to do that.
Put what?
Liens.
Liens. Yeah. I will, I will say, I know on behalf of this board, because this board does handle the stormwater drainage of this county as well, too. We, I think of, of the way the county did things, probably when this subdivisions were put in back then versus the way we do things today is totally different. And we are, we take a very, very serious approach to looking at these subdivisions for long-term maintenance, not short-term maintenance, long-term maintenance. Because at the end of the day, the county will be on the hook, no matter if it's short-term or long-term, right? So as a county, I think what we want is we want developments going in that have the infrastructure put in correctly and that is maintained over a period of time. And I think that, I know it sounds like your local government lip service, but I can tell you that I know the practices and what we've been doing up here for the last three and a half years, we've been correcting a lot of those mistakes that have been made in the last three years. And folks, we have a lot more to do yet. But the one thing we're not going to do is jeopardize new development and continue to keep shooting ourselves in the foot of doing subdivisions poorly. We can't afford that. It's not how we're going to go forward up here. And I know, I'm, I don't ever speak for my other commissioners, but I think on this one, I think we're pretty unified on that one.
You're saying almost the same thing I said at the commission meeting.
Oh, well, I didn't mean to repeat, but stormwater is very, very important to us. Very important to us. Remember, we're a county. We don't have water. We don't have sewer. We don't have the municipality, utility companies. Stormwater is, is it for us. It's the Holy Grail. And so we're making sure as these subdivisions come through here, that we're holding the developers and the people that are doing this to a high standard and that it's being followed through, through the design process, all the way to when this starts getting put in place. We'll have people out there checking and making sure that this stuff is put in properly. So those I know aren't, they might just be your local government assurances, but I know from my perspective, a lot of the time that I spend up here, it's making sure that we are back on track and that we're inspecting and we're doing things to make these subdivisions go in that last a long time and, and that drain properly. And the one thing that I'll end on is Porter County probably has one of the strictest release rates in the state of Indiana. And what that means is we hold more water than anybody holds before they release it out into waterways. And if we can continue to do our subdivisions in this fashion and hold this water, and what that also by holding that water and having more storage, it cleans the water before we release it out into, out into the tributaries and things like that. So it's not only the proper thing to do for storage and water storage, it's also the proper thing to do for releasing clean water into our tributaries. And that's a big thing for us up here. And that's what guides us every day as we move through these subdivisions. So that, I just wanted to make my, my statement on that, knowing that what our department up here has been tasked to do. And we take a very critical eye to all this. And, please, it's, it's.
I mean, quite simply is that we have found in the last three, three and a half years is to come back and fix somebody else's problem is, is very expensive. And we're just not willing to do that. We're going to make sure it gets fixed right the first time.
And the only thing I'd add is that we have our own engineer now. We have our, we have people that are looking out for our interests that are on our team. They're not consultants. They're not outside entities.
And I, last I would add is that we started in this year, we're having Mr. Navatney appear at Plan Commission meetings in which we're at the stormwater review portion. So he'll be available when this matriculates through the system. He'll be available at that meeting to explain to whoever's present, including the board, how they're meeting the requirements and how the water flows. And is available then to answer the, you know, the surrounding citizens' questions on the stormwater itself. And that has been paying great dividends at the meetings to get everybody on the same page as to exactly how the stormwater system is running. Because frankly, besides traffic, and it's probably, traffic and density is always issues, but stormwater is always the biggest issue from the, from the citizens. And so getting them to, having an opportunity to understand how it's actually working is really helping at the meetings.
What's the, what's the number of lots in this proposal? It's all single-family.
Ninety-two.
I was close. Ninety-two.
It's all single-family, right?
It's all single-family residential. Has there been variances requested for this?
I, as far as, I don't want to call them variances or anything like that. They're creating their own development standards.
Through the PUD.
Right. Right. I, and they have met the open space requirements. If they went to do the straight-up subdivision, they did have enough percentage in the open space to be able to get into what I call the bulk standard release that would allow them to get smaller lots on that. So.
So there's, there's obviously quite a bit yet to be decided on with this particular development.
Correct.
And we're going to, as one of the other commissioners had pointed out, you're going to address this transition to this adjoining property owner. So it's all that's taken into consideration.
Correct.
And I think the comments that have been given here this morning by the residents have been good input. And I think if there's other things that come up, we just need to keep communicating and talking back and forth and making sure that we, we get everybody in a, in a comfortable place. And that's what we're looking for up here as well, too. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the Woods Edge PUD ordinance regarding development located in the southwest corner of Hayes Leonard Road and Joliet Road on first reading.
Second.
There are a motion and a second for a PUD ordinance regarding a development located on the southwest corner of Hayes Leonard Road and Joliet Road. The subdivision is called Woods Edge. This is first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And I think that brings us to the end of our meeting, right?
Correct.
Do we have anybody here wishing to address this board on any other matters? Please come now and forever hold your peace. Yep, we have a gentleman, name, address, and everything up there. Thank you.
Ray Munger. I live in 793 Am Drive in Chesterton. I'm here with a few of my friends from the Grand Woods area. Two weeks ago, several, all the beavers in the Grand Woods watershed were trapped and killed. And we're coming here just to say that we think that that was a mistake and that to link a little more research on impact of beavers and infrastructure, they actually helped water quality. They helped animal diversity, which we've seen actually improvements since the beaver dams came in place the last couple of years. And they also helped with the water storage, which we just talked about. So this is probably not the right form to bring this up, but we wanted to say something publicly and let you all know that we're going to be trying to work to, education and outreach to make this something that hopefully doesn't happen in the future.
Thank you.
I'd like to just say one.
Come on up, Mike, and.
We didn't try, so that was a department action in response to multiple complaints from Grand Woods folks that live around the. from Grand Woods, folks that live around the pond on Grand Woods Drive. Just to clarify, we trapped one beaver, not all the beavers in the watershed. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm looking forward to working with you guys on how can we, how can Grand Woods stop and whether they're going to change.
Thank you. Was that your wife that I spoke to on the phone?
Yeah, yeah, my wife is Pam Reel.
Yeah, very pleasant to, to speak to, but as I understand it, what you, what you're wanting is just maybe some enhanced communication before we?
I mean, our, our hope actually is that maybe we get more of a network of people who are concerned, make sure that we come up with the best solutions to this question. And, you know, there are water issues in our neighborhood. We are, we are in a flood lane, but we think that maybe looking at all the options, you know. And so, again, maybe we don't know exactly what happened. We've been given to bring stories about whether there will be a resound, but, but yeah, essentially that's true. If we can, we will try to work with you. Wonderful.
Thank you again. Anybody else wishing to address this board, please come forward. And with that, 2019 comes to an end. It's been a great year. Thank you to the board, thank you to all of our staff, thank you for all the different departments in county government. We had a good year, let's buckle up and get ready for 2020. Have a great holiday.